Number four. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no, but there's a couple of different committee meetings. Once we get these committees all set up, that when we get done with the meeting, we should make sure we get some dates on. One is policy. And the other is fiscal. Or the negotiations certified, we just have to talk about which one because then I can go through with that group, the requests that we have on early retirements potential.
Any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to number five.
Uh, I think the motion for a preview agenda.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Thank you for saying that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, let's move on to number five, public comments and rebel recognition. We have...
Um, they are...
I think this is...
Part of our rebel recognition.
Okay. Is that the Model Union?
Dana Mopet and then our...
Oh.
Hi, we have a crew with us.
You're wonderful.
Were they wash up nice, right?
My model assembly crew.
Yeah, this is model assembly. I think it says Model UN, and that's actually in March. So this is model assembly, very similar programming. This is Isaac Gifford and Alex Gold, and they are two of the five students who are with us. So, I think Alex is gonna pop first.
Members of the board. I have always, I have always struggled to find an after-school activity that I feel really comfortable in. I've always been a nerd, a geek, social studies freak. But when I heard of model assembly, I'm like, "That sounds awesome, I want to join that." And so I did. And I had some of the best experiences of my life there. I've always struggled to try to voice my opinion, and there, I wasn't yelled at it for, or yelled for it, yelled at for it. And that was an odd experience for me. So then, I felt, I felt really accepted there. And I feel that it is an important skill, they have taught us important skills, I'm sorry, I'm unbelievable. They have taught us important skills there that we cannot usually learn at school, and I feel it's a very important after-school activity, or extracurricular activity. They taught us parliamentary procedure, how the government works, and overall democracy.
Wonderful.
What I found most appealing about this was just how much they teach you, and how they make it just fun. And I really liked going to state capital and exploring what they do there. I actually got to participate in like a fake bill going on, and I got to witness, I saw the college students doing like a mock judicial review. And one reason why I really wanted to go back there was it just teaches us skills, like you said, that we just don't usually get to learn, and very few kids get to experience it. So, I like it.
What grade are you guys in?
Eighth.
Eighth grade.
And you've already figured out the government already. You'll have to share us.
Um, so just a little bit more about model assembly. It's a realistic but complex simulation of the Minnesota state government. There's judges, attorneys, lobbyists, cabinet makers, media representatives, and then these guys were in the, what was it called?
Leadership Corps.
Leadership Corps, which is what eighth graders do. So then, once you're ninth through 12th, you get to kind of pick what you want to do. There's elected positions, and they, I think, are both excited to do that in the future. And they spend, they spent most of their time at the hotel in their meeting rooms, but once they're older, they'll be at the state capitol. And they kind of get free reign on the state capitol, they use all the tunnels. It's a pretty cool, like, I spent all my days in the judicial center. So I was in the courtroom, listening to different cases. So they, they talked about a lot of state and local issuers. Teacher tenure was actually one of them that we, that we listened to. So, a lot of good leadership opportunities for them, and they are held to a high code of ethics. They look like this every day, which is impressive, and we always think that our DGF students definitely represent our school well there.
I was blessed to be placed in the leadership corps, so I got to kind of follow these guys around for the four days that we were down there. But I also got to sneak a right way, go through the tunnels in the Capitol building, which was kind of fun too. But we did bring them over there to see some of the court cases that were going on. But yeah, like she said, next year they'll get to perhaps be in the supreme court chambers of the Capitol building, or perhaps on the senate floor, or the House of Representatives floor, being a representative or a senator. So, if they choose to go into that route next year, they have that option. But, I mean, how proud are we of these kiddos? Look at them, they're such amazing representatives. And this was our first year with model assembly, so they did an amazing job of representing our school.
Dana, who were the other kids? Did you guys, we'll say your name, say your names.
I'm Isaac.
I'm Alexander.
We also had Andrew Nielsen, and Nora Jones, and Niran Hujapori, of Wills as well. So, and some, some of them are opting to do Model UN as well, which is coming up in March. So they're very similar programs, Model UN being a student-run United Nations, whereas this was student-run state government. So, very similar, but they learned so much about parliamentary procedure. The coolest thing about this experience, at least for us, was that at 10:30 at night, when most of us were ready to pass out, because we were so exhausted, these guys were ready to get rolling on our delegation meetings. So, delegation meetings were started at 10:30 each night and went till 11:00 PM. So these, they routinely put in 12, 13, 14 hour days for four days straight. And at the delegation meetings, they were just ready to rock. So they would go on and on, and ready to go to bed. They had stories of their day, they were so excited that their bills got heard on the floor, that they got to debate their bills, they used parliamentary procedure. What are some of the turns that you guys know from parliamentary procedure? I yield my time for the chair.
I move my bill.
I move my bill. So they were speaking in a language we really didn't understand most of the time, which was super exciting. So, couldn't be prouder of them, and we're just very thankful that DGF gives us this opportunity to take students to these types of events, because like Alex pointed out, where else would they get this? And we have some great programming and great teachers, don't get me wrong, but this is just above and beyond, and it's just one more opportunity for them to learn about what they might do with their future. So, super awesome opportunity, and we thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, very impressive.
David, do you need any assistance tonight from Alexander in parliamentary?
I need a lot of assistance. These, these two advisors, I mean, you know, we've, we've tried to, we've talked about this for two, two, three years. And this was something that came about, I, I was fortunate enough when I was teaching to take some kids up. The Model UN up in northwestern Minnesota is linked in with the Winnipeg chapter, Rotary does a lot of it in Minnesota. It's done different in the rest of the state, and this is all linked in, there's, there's funds from the U of M to get this, this going, and more of a statewide. It's been in southern and eastern Minnesota quite a bit, it just hasn't hit into our region. And so, you know, it wouldn't have happened if it didn't have adults also, that were willing to do this on their own time. I mean, so I, I just, I really appreciate the fact of how much time these two have spent to try to get this program going, and, and you can see the excitement from the kids. We can't offer these things. And next year, yeah, they, when they know they're going to be at the Capitol, and, you know, it's the coolest thing, I went through with this, would have been like boy state has a lot of that same, very similar. So it's giving them that introduction at a younger age and trying to build that excitement. So, and we use some extra funding that we have available to try to get startup programs going. So we're using some of our gifted and talented funds and things like that. I've thrown that out to the principals, said, "Hey, look, if we got some, some programs that you can do to expand what kids are able to do extracurricular-wise, co-curricular-wise, we'll use those funds to get these programs initiated." If we can get adults that are willing to take it on, and we'll find, the kids will love it, so.
Yeah, it was fun to hear all excited.
Thank you to you two for all going above and beyond.
So will there be new eighth graders coming in another year then? These students would, these students would continue on to, or how long can they go?
How many kids can it support at one time? What's the goal?
How much money do we have?
Now, Model UN, we're up to about 15 kiddos. We started with four or five. So I mean, I think that's kind of what we may be... Small, but it's enough for us right now, it's manageable. There are some districts down there that have 150 to 200 students, and they have like six advisors. We feel very fortunate that we are very hands-on with our students who are down there, and their kids for the weekend, so I can imagine having 150 more kids, it's just crazy.
Alright, thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments rebel recognition, or public comments? Alright, we'll move on to item number six, and we already went through 6.1, so we have a 6.2 math curriculum report.
So our teacher representatives, Kayla Lauer, fifth grade teacher, Glendon, Kristy Pepple, kindergarten in Glendon, and then Katie Frisco in third grade in Dilworth. Now, we kind of have a cool bunch, and I'm gonna go back here so I can run the computer.
I was gonna be the...
Oh, you want to run the computer? So we have a cool bunch. Our math pilot people have, our math pilot people have been kind of an eclectic mix between people who were on the math committee starting out a couple of years ago that looked through and paged through and, and listened to a lot of stuff. So Katie and Kayla both were the, were on that initial committee. Once we figured out what we wanted to try out, the kind, the programs that we wanted to look at, Kristy Pepple was one of the teachers that decided that she wanted to kind of hop on and test it for the, for the kindergarten kiddos. So, they're, they have a great presentation. Jo and I will talk at the end regarding professional development and money. We got some great information, so, Katie.
Alright, so like Margot said, we started with a very good mix of teachers from both sites, grade levels, departments, interventionists, just really looking at a lot of different curriculums. And we're gonna kind of try to go through these first slides fairly quickly, because we presented this to you last spring. And so you kind of have heard some of this, but eventually, once you gave us the approval to go ahead and pilot expressions, our team changed a little bit. We added a few people that wanted to also pilot it and kind of jump on board and see what it was like. We kept in mind throughout this whole process, not only the DGF mission statement, but when we first began, we came up with our own math review committee mission statement and what we want for our elementaries with the math curriculum, and we've kind of held that close to us and kept that in mind as we were practicing our piloting and researching the different programs. So this is where we'll go kind of quickly, our process. We started in 2018. We surveyed our, both sites, teachers, what they felt they were already good at, what needs we had, and then we took that to create a rubric of our values and beliefs for math, and then started researching a lot of different curriculums. We looked at those different curriculums and compared them to our rubric, and ended up eliminating Bridges and Eureka, and then we took the last three, or, we took the others and tried some lessons, eliminated a couple more, and revisited Eureka, because we kind of felt maybe we wanted to take a look, closer look at that one after seeing some of the ed reports from it. We ended up eliminating everyday math as well, after looking at the newest version of that. That's what we have currently, and we felt that it no longer meets our needs and does the best to prepare our students and for math. We looked at samples from six different curriculums, scored them all, eventually we narrowed it down to three, everyday math, expressions, Eureka. We had home conferences with each, came down to expressions and Eureka, and that's when we invited in reps from both of those curriculum. And after hearing more about their complete programs and everything that both programs could offer, we voted 14 to 2 to pilot expressions. We presented that to the school board and got your approval to pilot. We finalized our pilot team, and from the beginning of this school year until currently, we're still piloting, but on December 16th, our pilot team voted unanimously to propose math expressions to be adopted by the DGF school district, with full implementation beginning the next fall of 2020. We were kind of proud of the fact that it was a unanimous vote, that everybody felt it was a really strong, solid curriculum.
Especially because when it came down to Eureka and expressions, we were 14 to 2, and so we thought, "Ooh, okay." And then after everybody had those chance from, or the chance from September to December to work with it, knowing that we were all feeling the same way, it was really nice to, that we're all on the same page, it was helpful.
And with equal representation all the way from K up to five, we had three per grade level teaching it, so there was an equal voice from every level.
We also had two special ed teachers using the resources in their classrooms and helping the students that they serve. So, we had a great group to try it. So up to this point, do you have any questions? Just kind of an overview of until maybe we were here last time.
And we're gonna share, we have, we have all the stuff in a folder, we'll share the links with you with the rubrics and those kinds of things after our presentation tonight, so you've got those.
Maybe what bored you too much? It's all like graphs and all that right away, make it more interesting.
So, data is something that we're always looking at. One thing that we've noticed, we compared DGF to a number of districts that are also have used everyday math and have switched to expressions. And one thing that we noticed, if you'll take a look at, like, for example, grade three, I guess, we'll start at 2009, and then grade three is 90, 90.9% proficient. And then if you go diagonally down, that same group of kids in fourth grade were 81% proficient, in fifth grade they were 54% proficient, and it continues to decline. So, that's with our everyday math curriculum, and that trend has kind of continued, that it's solid in those primary grades, but as it goes on, it's not meeting the needs of our students. There's just, we have found a lot of holes, and we've been filling those holes for 20 years. We've done the best that we can, but we're making up our own things and constantly searching and finding something to fill our gaps with.
And can I just step in for just a second? And if you look at, what this shows is the cohort data, so the cohort are the same, the same groups of kids, so if you look down, you can see where, you know, Katie had said 90, 90.9% of kids were proficient, and then you go that diagonal route, and that's why it's color-coded. So those, that same group of kids was 81.4% proficient. The next slide, Jo will show, thank you, the same trend statewide. So it's showing that same, that same trend.
Right, so across the state of Minnesota, that, that trend continues, and we have felt for a long time that when we hit fourth grade, fifth grade as elementaries, that our curriculum just has too many holes. We, we look a lot at our standards. We've done a lot in the past years with writing early yellows, essential learning outcomes, writing common formative assessments to meet all of these standards, and so many of them, as we go back and look at our curriculum, we're rewriting tests. With third grade, we wrote every test for, for everyday math over the last five years.
Do these charts look familiar at all? This is college stuff?
This is everyday math.
So this is everyday math?
This is what we have.
Anyone who's using it, why?
Yeah, well, not statewide, but the one before was, was DGF. And then we did also look, I don't think that slide's in here, but Perm was another good example of a local district that has also used everyday math. Same trends, same issues, and they just switched to expressions, they started it this year.
The trend that hasn't had that three or four years to get those kids to their grade and say, right.
And this data piece just came out within the last year and a half. This is stuff that Bob Porter, who, the revenue, when you think of the revenue projection model and some of that stuff that I always use, so, you guys know, I've, I've been doing the cohort stuff for, so I was talking about, about, I said, "Can you do this on a statewide basis?" So this is brand new stuff that he came out with this past year. And so we can look at, this is the stuff where we can get it down, drill it down to demographic groups for each one of these things. So we can go down to a particular demographic group, we can follow that group and see what's happening. At what point do we start dropping off? Whether it be math reading, and then when we're hearing other school districts implementing new curriculum, we can go right to their data and find out, when did they implement it, and what are we seeing? Did it have an effect? We don't have to wait for salespeople to try to give us.
And that was something the three of us, and Margot and Jo got the opportunity to do a week ago, when we sat down, and it was really cool, we could paint a district who was using everyday math, we have the numbers to districts that were using expressions, and we could look at it. The difficult part with expressions is because it's a 20, or 2018 addition, is you don't have enough of a trend yet, so it's not enough to say, "Well, who will they have it?" And you would know in the first three years typically with any new curriculum, there's gonna be those bumps along the way. So we're really excited to see three, four years down the road, where we are, but also schools that are two, three years ahead of us, what it looks like. But this was really cool to see lots, and we could pull it up really fast. 19 seconds in between is what we found.
Yeah, we did. It says seven, it says wait seven seconds, but we need to talk to your guys.
It was a little long. Mine is something you do it.
Bugs bother the CPU on your computer.
So with data, we know that anytime you make a shift with curriculum, it takes, if your trend, your scores tend to drop over the next three years before they show growth, just because there's a big shift in teachers getting more comfortable with it, but also like, for example, my third graders this year, we just got into our subtraction, addition and subtraction unit, and expressions is much higher rigor, and my third graders, we spent about a week on two lessons, because with expressions, once they have a K1, 2, and they'll come into third grade ready to do three-digit subtraction with regrouping, at this point, they weren't ready, so we had to really slow down. So if I were to take the MCAs this year, look, which I am. My third graders, I mean, I don't, I don't know what to expect, because honestly, I feel like they're getting so much more than they got with everyday math, so I'm kind of excited for MCAs to see, does my class look lower than other classes who didn't have expressions, or are they staying where they need to be, or are they even maybe a little bit above? Because it, it's just such higher rigor and understanding that builds us so much of a stronger foundation than what our curriculum currently has, so.
And I've been snooping a little bit, we just got done progress monitoring for our January benchmark, and our, I can, Renaissance, our star learning, has very unique ways to put data together. So there is a definite preliminary difference between the scores for piloting teachers and not piloting teachers. We go by scale scores, so we have a starting score and an ending score or scale score, and it was about 100 points higher between non-piloting, first all the kids, or the kids that were getting everyday math, and the kids that were getting expressions. So those foundational skills are being picked up, plus the ones that we need.
So expressions was...
So expressions was...
You're hoping on that one.
Yeah, no, just kidding. And again, that's preliminary. Ben, you're done that. So, so preliminary, again, we have some kids that haven't tested, there's a lot of stuff coming in, but I did take a little sneak peek, so it was super exciting just to see, again, some of those gaps between third and fifth, but also looking at the gaps that were filled between the non- test, the non-MCA tested piece, you know, we talk a lot about the MCA stuff, the K1 and 2, I guess, so, I got excited with that.
And this isn't gonna change the fact that we still will have that type of testing.
Right.
Okay, we'll still have the costs, the start, you know, what else not? It's, but it's how well it's, it's linked in together that you can take that information, and man, we can see that, alright, it looks like we're predicting that they're gonna do well this spring, because they're, the foundation's there. So you think about those funds that we spent for that, because we spent $27,000 just on those testing. So there's a lot of, lot of money involved in this stuff, but the more that the data is backing up that kids are achieving, that's what we want.
Now we got national reports.
Yes, so ed reports is unbiased, takes a look at different curriculums, and we used this from the very beginning, looking at all of the different curriculums, and used it to help us look at what we thought might be a good fit for us. So we chose three to share with you today, everyday math, which is our current curriculum, the one we've had for 20 some years, I think. And so as you can see, the reds are things that they do not meet that, or do not, are not considered quality, I guess. Yellow, kind of in between, and then if there were any green, which you'll see there are not, that would be like, yes, this meets what you want. So, that's everyday math.
And we also did, if you look on the reports overview, we added, we added the link to where we got all this information, so you can go back and read the specifics, you can go to kindergarten, see the rigor, the fluency, all of those aspects as well. So that's up on the corner, and we did that with all of the reports.
It gives a much more detailed report. So this was Eureka, which is the one that we originally mixed, and then we came back to it. And the reason we got rid of it in the beginning was the look of it, that we're dealing with elementary kids, and it was a big workbook with plain white paper with three very tiny written sentences on the page, and it's not, it didn't look engaging. So we kind of pushed that one aside right away, and when we came back and looked at ed reports and saw the great scores that it had, we thought we better give it a better chance than that. And I liked a lot of the lessons from it, but it was dry, it wasn't engaging. And then when we heard from the representative, one of the big things that was missing was there was no technology, no technology support, or no technology piece for students, for parents, there was for teachers, but it was pretty much just an online manual. And with the direction that technology is going, that was a big difference.
And also, it did not coincide with the Minnesota state standards. It was, there's a difference between the standards of Common Core, and then there's national standards, where Minnesota is not considered a Common Core standard, we don't use those, those national standards that a lot of other schools use. We do use the Minnesota math standard. So when you look at math expressions, there's three different versions. There's a California version, there's the national version, and then there's the Common Core version, nationals where the independent states make their own standards. Eureka did not coincide with, with Minnesota standards, so that was kind of a turnoff as well, just because we know how important it is to be very specific, and again, it's back to, you know, what we need our kiddos to know, you know, with the most, with...
Well, we've only, even with third grade, some of our standards were missing, so we looked back to see if they taught in second grade or first grade. Some of our third grade standards weren't actually taught until the sixth grade curriculum in Eureka, which is like, so I'm supposed to pull the unit from sixth grade to teach to my third graders, and it, it just didn't work yet. Math expressions has the same high scores as, as Eureka does, so that's just one more example of why we really liked this. You'll see, high rigor, high focus, high clearance, the usability ratings, great for all of it, so, K through five.
Do you want to talk a little bit about how they adjust the, say, say, two years from now, Minnesota standards change? What does, what does math expressions bring to us? What is their...
They also change.
They, exactly, yep. Math expressions will change, say, the Minnesota standards change in fifth grade, math expressions, because they have such a big client base, will change their materials for Minnesota.
It's not like given that textbook you're stuck with for the next 10 years, and you know you're gonna have to order another set of textbooks?
Your uncle's name is in it.
And again, all the report reviews are up there in the left-hand, or the right-hand corner, I'm sorry.
And when Katie was talking about Eureka, because student engagement and the technology piece and the rigor were probably our top non-negotiable, these are the things we have to have in our curriculum, and that's really what pushed it out. Is it probably a great curriculum? Yes, but is it what's best for our students? No. And that's the big part. And the ed report does look great, but it still has to be a good fit for us.
And we also thought about teacher buy-in. We want the teachers to be excited about the curriculum as well, and to feel like that it is user-friendly and, and ready to give it 100%. Right. Any questions on any of the data pieces? Almost done.
I mean, I don't think there's any rock you guys have.
We did our best.
Even just, I mean, even thinking about the process of what we did, I mean, I remember sitting at the meetings and thinking like, "Can we just..."
It's a lot of pressure when you realize that you're a small group making a decision that will affect the whole district and all of, or all of the students, and so we really took it very seriously. It's taken a while, but... It's taken a while, but.
Katie, Katie, I know the feeling.
I have a little bit of a reveal here with this group because I did come in not being on the two-year long initial committee and just seeing the work that they put into it. And whatever it is, I really feel, I mean, coming in at kindergarten, there's definitely a pro with any new curriculum, I'm at ground level, which is one of the pros of kindergarten. Anyway, but you know, coming in at ground level and thinking what, what am I being asked to have my students do this year? If you'd have asked me in September, I would have thought, oh my gosh, I can't do this with five-year-olds. But learning the language and learning the routines and learning why things are being done the way they are and just seeing how they've come along so quickly. And they're being much more automatic with their math skills. And they're really processing and understanding what they're doing. It's not just an automatic memorized routine. I feel like K one, two, we've always loved the everyday math, fun and games way of doing things. But I think fun and games have hurt us in the long run. We get to that, fourth, fifth grade and things spiraling constantly. They don't have that several days or several weeks of building a routine and building structuring of numbers to really get it solid before they move on to something else, which was the way everyday math has had us operating for many, many years. So I feel like kids are getting a much stronger foundation. Lots of great things, but there's still lots of hands-on learning with fun manipulatives and games and things that come even at the primary levels.
Right. And a lot of us too on the community have had the opportunity that we're parents of kids in the district and our children are also, my child in kindergarten class was using it. So watching her and some of the things she says, I'm like, oh, yes, that's great. And Kings, I'm considering fifth grade too and we have some others. So it's nice to see both ends of it too, of where things that they're doing at the where they're at in the high end. Right. And they'll be excited once they've had it consistently.
Right, especially as a parent and you're seeing your child.
Right.
Because that is another standard.
Right, the things that they say and like, just her number sense and I'm like.
Their signature, it's crazy what Landon comes home and says. I mean, it's, it's not, it's very exciting.
So we kind of already talked about standard alignment, but it does align very nicely to the Minnesota standards. We worked really hard to look at our individual standards and where they're hit and if they're hit to a point of being just an exposure or a mastery or a development standard. We found them, they were really laid out well throughout the entire curriculum. With any curriculum, it's not going to be perfect. And for example, third grade, of all of our Minnesota math standards, we found two that were weakly addressed. One was with money, may, being able to make change up to a dollar. And the other one was with time. And what I found interesting was after meeting with, like, across grade levels and hearing how kindergarten is starting with money and building this strong support or strong foundation with money and then first grade and then second grade, it kind of made me, gave me a sigh of relief that they're coming in with the foundation so that I don't have to worry about teaching it. And that's something that expression, or everyday math was really missing. Third grade spent a lot of time trying to add money because all of us were trying to add money. And so it's exciting to hear that they're going to be more prepared for that. So while it might not be a huge unit in third grade, it doesn't need to be because it really truly will be building. Right, and the third grade MCAs for me will turn into, instead of being tested on what you learned in third grade, you'll be tested on what you've been learning and the foundations you've been building.
Now, we were going to do a really, we were going to do an in-depth piece with the components, but Kayla.
Yeah, I won't take your whole time, so we're happy to share. But one of the nice things is, we talked about the technology piece. So first of all, everything's online, resources is great that way. It has a portal for the kids to get through, which is really easy. It's simple for them to get on and with three through five being one-to-one devices, obviously that's very beneficial. Grades everything automatically. I can manipulate, I can take out questions, I can modify. I can send my kids a fourth grade skill if I feel like, oh, I want to see where they're at. So I have access to all the grades, not just fifth grade, which is awesome. And then it'll show me how they did. It tells me specifically if they got this question wrong, what standard it is that they're not understanding. It'll also break it down into like, as a class, did everybody struggle on this? I can look at one student, I can look at the whole class, I can look at one question, shows me what they answered. One thing we did learn right away is the kids have to answer all the questions. They see five and they think, oh, I'm five, turn it in. Well, there was seven, so they did see six and seven. So at the beginning, it was a learning curve of remembering, go all the way to the end. So you know you're at the last question before you hit submit. But when they have no answer, you know they did, which is nice. And then making those reports is really easy to espouse for them and keep track of everything. Nice to see, there's a lot of online resources too, as far as manipulatives for them that they can use. They can turn their computer into pretty much like a interactive whiteboard that can pull in money, it can pull in fraction tiles. So one thing as a teacher I hate, here's a baggie with your little pieces. Does everybody find them and do you have this? And they can just manipulate it all right there, which is really nice that they can do that without having to pull a bunch of stuff out and then make a tree, put it away. Those are there, so that's nice for them to have. There's some online games too, which is nice for them to have access to. But something they can do even at home, that's students that have been sick or out and they're able to still access and do it when they're there. So that piece is really nice. And then there's some parent resources that are really helpful. For fifth grade, I always get parents that say, how do you divide? They don't divide like I used to divide. And it's got laid out examples that you can send home for parents to of when your kid's doing it this way, that's not maybe how you've done it. This is why, or this is the steps that they're going through and it explains it really nice, which is helpful. So if you want to see more of the online piece, I'm happy to share with you. But I could probably spend an hour just showing you around what it has, which is really not what we need. But that was a piece we really wanted, was that online component for the teachers as well as the students. And it gets them ready for the MCAs and not that we want to say it's all of tests, but they've learned a lot too about how do you take a question from a screen, copy it correctly, solve it and go back and put in your answer. And just how many times do we make error to just send that transfer from screen to paper? So getting that skill is really helpful for them to get used to that.
I like the piece where it says where they're missing.
Yeah.
Instead of like months going by and you're trying to figure out what piece that, that child is missing.
Yeah, and it then has questions specific to that standard that I can say, okay, Sandy needs more practice on adding fractions because that's where she's got a hole. And I can send it just to you, or if it's out of the hole, I can send it to the whole class. So that differentiation piece is huge and easy in that way of you can manipulate it fast instead of making twenty back whole copies of you need this and you need that and you need that. So that piece is helpful too.
And at the K level, you know, with the current technology that we have, I've been using smart board as exposure to my students so they are familiar with the things that are out there. They are kind of familiar with how they work, but having twenty kids sit and each come up and take a turn, to do it on the interactive whiteboard isn't the most efficient use of our time usually. So we've been using it for some test prep, some, you know, just exposure to the different things that are out there. But until those touch devices trickle down kindergarten, first grade land. Current, the technology is great, there's a lot of resources for teachers. My students aren't using it to that level independently yet.
All right.
Very impressive.
Professional development and financial stuff, because I know you're all wondering how much this is going to cost us. So in regards to fidelity and equity for the program, we really enquired through Hoot and Mifflin about what they can offer for our teachers for professional development. Because again, we go back to our teachers need to be trained to give our kids what they need. And they need to be trained in equity and fidelity and differentiation. So how are we going to do that? We're very lucky, we have twenty elementary teachers that have been trained this first year for free with the pilot program, the training came with it. So we have twenty first-year trained implement, well, not right now, at the end of the year, pilot first-year implementation teachers. So we really want to look at this. And Joe, if you could just really quickly click on the link on top, the pink link. This is our professional development plan. Again, this is through Hoot and Mifflin. We've developed those relationships with them to be able to negotiate prices. Year one, year two, year three, the duration, what it is and the learning outcomes that, that come out of each one. And we are, you know, right now, we're, we are well-equipped to be able to give our teachers this through Hoot and Mifflin and through our train the trainer programs. Joe, if you could go back. And then we're going to show you, Joe is going to talk about the quotes for the price. But each of these quotes does come with one free full day of professional development for all of our teachers. That sounds like a commercial, free. So Joe, take it away, financial.
Good-looking members of the board. So they break it down and you can break it down by year. Year one, obviously sixty-two thousand dollars. You're buying a lot of stuff upfront with their account. All the way down to an eight-year subscription, one hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. Okay, so the sticker shock of this is, wow, one hundred seventy-one thousand dollars for a new math curriculum. It's not all doom and gloom when you look at kind of what we've been using for consumables thus far with our everyday math curriculum. So yes, it's an upfront payment, but currently we are basically throwing away ten thousand dollars on consumables for our everyday math curriculum that we're using. Okay, this wasn't an exact science too, but there's an absolute direct correlation with our pilators using math expressions with the ones that are using everyday math. To the tune of, if we looked at, it was a difference of about fourteen thousand copies from the beginning of the year to January. Fourteen thousand copies just in the third grade. That was the difference.
In doors, just.
Just in doors, yeah, just to the pilators alone. Now, if you take that fourteen thousand, you want to get technical, we can go by the percentage they teach math, we can multiply by, but fourteen thousand copies, just half a year, which I think we had, we came up with a number per ream and all this stuff to wear and tear. But there's obviously a savings there. And more importantly, it's not putting our, you know, when you look at it, where do you want your staff, waiting outside a copying machine? Or do you want them doing what they do best and that's in the classroom, getting ready for the kids? So that was, that was a big kind of eye-opener. Things like iXL, you know, which, you know, it's kind of those, you know, it's not a huge cost, but things that we can look at kind of eliminating, simplifying because this curriculum does meet a lot more of our needs.
And it comes with that same program, personal math training that coincides with what the kiddos know.
Yeah, it's got a lot of things going for it. And then also, you know, if you just look at it over the last twelve years, you know, we've spent over a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars just on the math program and consumables. Now, I know it says twelve years, not eight years, but we currently pump a significant amount of money with our consumables, so that one seventy-one that we're looking at, when you take into consideration the things that we have to spend and we have to utilize anyway with the district funding, it's, it's really not as bad.
All right, so, you know, we, we're not perfect. As you all know, we're not perfect. We have a lot of questions to ask and answer for ourselves and our staff to benefit our kids the most. You know, how do we accommodate the professional development? You know, we have this plan for all of our elementary teachers to come in this summer and work for seven days and this and this. But you know that, that contractually and, and, you know, in reality, that's not going to happen. So we really need to think about how we're going to implement a professional development piece for those teachers and now staff members that are going to be using this. So these are questions and stuff that we still need to think about. How do we monitor the fidelity within the classrooms? Do we, as administration and as peer support, you know, how does that look? And how do we make sure that people are doing the program the way it's supposed to be? How do we make sure fifth grade is getting what they need when they're going to be at a different building? Huge question that we're going to have to figure out. And then validating the alignment between grade levels and vertical teams. So how do we make sure that grade levels have a chance to meet as well as talk about with the vertical teams? And it kind of all encompasses, come together is, how will we ensure that all of our staff are trained so that all students will have equal access to the fidelity and successes of this program that you've seen the benefits for tonight? So we've got, we've, we've got a lot of information, we've done a lot of work, but we still do have questions and we will and we'll figure those out as, you know, we keep putting the puzzle pieces back together.
And all in all, I was, you know, I was skeptical because you know the staffs at both sites and you can kind of pick and choose like, all right, some are really strong in technology and some aren't. And we had a real good mixed bag that were piloting this. And everyone was on board. There was a lot of questions when we had our professional development time, but everyone was on board. It was nice to see the ones that have that technology ability and the ones that didn't, but were getting it. So there, you know, I think this first year piloting has really kind of eliminated a lot of the anxiety that maybe some of our veteran teachers had that, you know, used to the same everyday math program for so long. So they've done a really nice job.
We had quite a few veteran teachers who chose to pilot, which was exciting to see. And then, you know, some newer teachers as well. So we've got a great mix. Looking ahead, next year, if you should approve all of this, I think we're going to have a lot of great support at each grade level to make this successful and a smooth transition.
So they were one of the votes.
Yes, and we made sure of that. Cause there are, there are some of the ones that weren't on the official committee that said, I feel kind of bad voting and not being on the initial. But, but the whole point of it was getting your, getting your fingers in and, you know, and actually digging into the stuff. So, which was super cool to have a group of teachers, you know, unanimously say, yes, let's go for this with all of the, you know, with, with that, you know, six months of professional development and working with this stuff too, so.
I think with the number of people that piloted too, I mean, and the number of staff we have overall, we would have most of one-to-one matchup with kind of, yeah, like a buddy system. You're my, I'm going to mentor you, you know, and of course, if Lynn and there are only two of us, so that would be an obvious match, but even then we can have, there'll be more sections. And then we'll have that future as you roll through, how can you navigate this? I mean, you know, it's great to have those whole grade level conversations too, but time is limited and finding time to meet with one person is oftentimes way easier than trying to get six or seven.
So again, in the links, we'll share, we'll share the folder with you. We have this PowerPoint presentation with all the links that we talked about. We have the one, three, six in your actual layout of all of the stuff that's proposed and the prices with that. So if there's any other information or questions you have, please, please, please ask us. This is super exciting for us and we are willing to share and invite you in our classroom to see some stuff in action and go from there.
Send you sample homework.
Yeah, send them homework to see how they go.
Does this curriculum allow, if you've got some more advanced students in the grade that you could do stuff, or is it from the fact that you can pull higher rates?
One component is called the practice, reteach and challenge. And there, yes, and so I've pulled from that quite a bit this year where I have, well, for example, with subtraction, my kids that are struggling with the regrouping or ungrouping and I've pulled the reteach and then pulled a small group during my math workshop to reteach. The kids that are feeling more confident, they can work on the practice. And those kids that had it from day one, that just picked up right away, they can have the challenge, which pushes them a little farther, gives them bigger numbers to work with. So it's all right there, which I felt, yeah, it was exciting because that's one of the things we were always looking for. Like, how can I push my kids that are higher and not just have them be?
Make the number longer.
Right.
Go more than.
Yeah, exactly. That's not how we do it here.
And the online piece has a part that goes with that too is, everything has what's called a homework version and a test version. And so in the homework version, they have an option to walk it through step-by-step. So the computer will show them, first thing you should do is this, do that, that. And then also they can put in their answer and then check it and it'll say, nope, you're wrong, you need to go back. And it'll show them an example. And then in test mode, they don't have any of that support. So for those kids that are ready for that challenge or you want to see what really can they do independently, it's nice to give them that version and you can have the kids who needs a little more support. Computer looks the same, nobody knows they're doing anything different. It's not a blue bird, red bird, I clearly know a true by men kind of thing. They just are all doing the same thing. So that's really nice to, they still get asked the same types of questions with those that need a supporter. The other thing that I didn't, that we didn't mention that I think a lot of parents are looking for is the fluency piece, the math fluency piece. So starting in kindergarten, first grade, they're doing a lot with just knowing your basic addition and subtraction facts. Third grade, we start at the very beginning of the year with multiplication and division facts by like right together, which I was like, they can't do a division right away. And sure enough, they can. But it's, that's a piece we've been missing and that we, as teachers, have struggled with. Like, do we do timed tests because everybody cringes at that? But you know they need to know those facts as well. So this has that and the kids love it. And it's not in a high-pressure situation, it's just looking, giving them that opportunity to learn it, so.
I think the assessment options have some nice components, like you were speaking to, also to kind of hone in on how our kids are actually thinking. Like the, you know, there's a basic assessment form, then there's another one that's.
Performance task.
Then there's a performance task, which I have given a few of those even to my kindergartners and a small group while the others are playing games or doing other center-type work. By giving them an opportunity to actually physically manipulate things and I can almost see how their wheels are spinning and see how they're operating and are they ready for a challenge? Are they really needing some extra support with some, some basic skills? So they're, having the different assessment options is really nice at, at all the grade levels. But it's the, what do you call it, the performance ones?
Yeah.
Where you can actually watch them. And each student might answer something different. Because for example, mine said, you know, take these blocks and make a, make a train that is larger than three blocks. They could have made one that went up to ten, somebody may have stopped at seven. And then you're having them answer questions and do activities based on what they originally built. So as I'm watching them and seeing how they are thinking. So as I'm watching them and seeing how they are thinking and processing new things, it helps me know, you know, what, they keep teaching more, or they're, they're ready to move on to something, something else. So I don't, you don't always know why they get an answer wrong, but when they're performing in front of you, it's a rare opportunity to see that.
And a lot of the assessments, I feel, are them applying the skills. It's not just a, oh, you learned how to multiply, there's ten multiplication problems. You know, you only need one or two to see if they can do it or not, but it's applying their skills to bigger situations, to real-life situations.
So you would walk around, or you have a screen that you can simply look at each individual?
Either.
Yeah, you have to do the paper, because everything has a paper version too, for those kids that need that, you would obviously correct yourself and see where they're at and walk around, but the online component is nice, because as soon as they're done, you get that instant feedback, what were they at, what did they get, what questions did they get right, what questions did they get wrong? You can see their answer, you can see the right answer, what's the standard in all those, that's really nice to see, where are the holes? And you could assign them one single question too. I just want you to do this adding fractions, to see if everybody gets it, kind of thing, so.
We've got some rock stars. I mean, honestly, I know their stuff.
So, you can tell the excitement?
Yeah.
Which is great.
Said very fast, sorry.
So we're not, of course, there is no decision right now, but this is a great example of, those of you who've gone through any of the curriculum stuff before, I can honestly say that in the time I've been here, this is the best process that's ever gone. This is all the way through, and I don't make it easy on the principals either, as you probably have figured out, because I want, when the presentation comes, I want to be able to see what the, the staff went through, and their selections, and the process, and vetted that process, and then notice, they've got the financial, they got the professional development, they've got all these things, and the next question. I mean, those, those things are going to come up, but the process, and look at the national data, okay? We know this stuff is good, valid data. We've got state data. Look at how they're utilizing that cohort data. I mean, we're doing things now internally, we weren't doing before. After that, you had to build the relationships, everybody was working together, the grade levels, you can, you can see when they're talking about the holistic, I mean, they're talking about wrapping this sucker around every grade level, everything else. This is the most flawless process for curriculum since I've been here, that I've seen. So kudos to everybody involved.
Thank you.
Very impressive, and really, uh, can appreciate everyone's passion.
Yeah. We're, we're dorky educators, we've got to be more and more.
Yeah, I feel like these seven fifteen minutes.
Remind me of the same process Jake does with his technology all the time, where it's well executed all the way through.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to six point three, DGF Middle School Report.
I'll be fun going after those guys.
You might just have to sing it.
All the children supported the whole group.
Yeah, exactly, stick it down.
I just have a few shout-outs I want to do real quick. I want to say thank you to these two. They leave early Thursday morning and they open until Sunday, and they said, and it is literally those long days, and then they come back to work on Monday. So thank you guys for doing that. As Alex said, it really gives an opportunity for kids who aren't involved at other things, and I was teasing Alex before, that I think he's going to be a politician and I'll vote for him. I'm excited about that. I also want to tell you that we had a geography bee, which we've been doing for years now, and, but for the first time this year, we did a spelling bee, and that was really fun. So again, trying to get as many activities for kids other than things that kids maybe have been traditionally involved in, so we were excited to have that. We had the same winner for both the GOB and the spelling bee, Kedaladi, so. The other thing is a school climate cohort that I presented to you before, about we had a meeting last Wednesday in Burris Falls, and we got our survey results back. Super interesting, we are having a meeting, I think it's Monday, February third, I think is when we're doing it, and it's the group of us, we actually are taking a day to go through the data, but during the day, they taught us how to go through the data and what to do, they gave us tools, processes, and so now we have to go through the rest of it. We want to come and present it to you all at another date. It really aligns with what our visions and goals are for the buildings and the systems that we're trying to put into place, and you're looking again at students, parent guardians, and staff, so. It was a really good day, exhausting though, anytime you look at data for seven hours, you're, you're tired. What I handed out to you, it just, this won't take long, but I wanted to share with you a little bit about the process we're going through, and we're tweaking it, I'm sure we're missing things, but for the twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two master schedule, it is a huge task with a lot of implications for students. If you think about that, we're going to be accountable for every single minute of the day, from the time that their little toes land at the school till they go home and all the extracurriculars afterwards, we have a great feat of not only meeting the needs of our students, standards, using our FTEs, using our space, right? There's just so many things that go into planning a master schedule. So we are looking at how to best do that. On a January twentieth day, we got some individual feedback to send, I wouldn't let them talk to each other. I had a, a document that I had done in Google, and I would not let them talk to each other because I wanted their individual feedback, I did not want it to be about what they thought their teammate wanted to hear. So Dana went through that, it was lockdown mode, yep, they couldn't talk, so. From that, I'm in the process of looking at the themes from that feedback, how many people want common crap? How many people, you know, are looking at advisory, character ed, and so we are getting some feedback from, or some themes from that, and it's very interesting for me to look at. Our next step is we're going to identify our values, priorities, and guidelines, and I can't tell you how much we are focusing on what's right for kids. It's not what's easiest for Heidi Critchley or Datamopit, it's what's right for kids, and that is sometimes means that it's, you, you really have to keep that focused, because it's easy to go the other way. We need to look at our requirements, what do middle school kids have to have, what are the standards, what are the things, facility use and all those other things. We're gathering ideas from others, the great thing about education is we steal from others a lot, so we're doing tours, emailing phone contacts to other schools, get schedules. I'm going to have a parent form, where I'm going to hopefully have some of my leadership team there, show them some things we're looking at, ask them what's important to them, I don't know what kind of results we'll get, but happy to have it, and then we'll do a survey too. Got that idea from Alexandria at School Climate, that's some of the things they're doing when they're looking at it, so I, that again was something I learned there. Student feedback, they are the best consumers, and US middle schoolers, they do know everything, and so they'll have lots of ideas for us. Contact to grade level meetings, and then people that really walk the building a lot are the PERS. By the way, it is PERS Appreciation Week this week, and we are busy celebrating them. They do, they do great work at our school, so, but also attending their meetings and get some feedback from them. Our leadership team will take all this data, we'll develop some rough drafts, probably version A, if you want this, this is version A, if you want this, this is version B, because you can't have both. So we have to make some decisions about what we think is important. And then on April sixth, we have a PD night from four to seven thirty, and I pretty much think that will be completely focused on referendum stuff, you know, building, this, everything. And then continue sharing feedback throughout the year, making this a collaborative effort, using our leadership teams, and then at every staff meeting, having as one bullet item, whether it's the leadership team sharing out some things, or whether it is me sharing with them, maybe a speaker, maybe I'm going to have Jake come talk about technology, but at some point at every staff meeting, making sure that we are communicating with people. Our goal, it's a lofty goal, I think, is to have a draft by August, that'd probably mean a lot of summer meetings, but that's okay. And again, it doesn't have to be that perfect one, but a good working copy. So then throughout that next school year, we can, as we learn things, and we haven't been in this building before, but thankfully, we've had fifth grade team members, Kayla's come to two of our leadership team members already, meetings already, and then they all came on January twentieth to that large group meeting that we did. So they, it's really nice, because we can say, hey, what's over there in that corner again, or how does this work, and that's been nice, so thank you, thanks, I know it's one more thing on your plate besides this master. So, and then we're just really excited about that process. And the second one is the tours that we have kind of initiated. I connected with the Horizon, let's see, East Principal, and he suggested I contact the Horizon West, just because he feels like there's more things on that end. I said that we were, we wanted to look at science steam labs, we wanted to look at media center use, and music, and, I don't know, it was like four or five things, and so I said, please give me suggestions. Dorothy Dodds, I contacted Nancy Wilson, because from Jeremy at Horizon, he suggested I contact Dorothy Dodds, so I contacted her. Liberty, they were awesome, that's in West Fargo, I think the principal's name is Michelle Weber there, and she's actually, we are going over next week, it looks like, for a tour at three thirty. She also invited the New Heritage Principal, that is the name of the new middle school that they're building somewhere over there, and she said, the reason that she would like her to be there is because they will, they can show us the blueprints, but she can also tell us what they're doing different from what they did at Liberty, from now using the building, and what they would suggest to do now. And that's a really unique experience, and I'm excited about that. And then Fargo Public Schools, Missy Agnes used to be the assistant superintendent there at Morehead, and now she's not, we're at Fargo, and I contacted her and said, yeah, I really trust her, she's got a great head on her shoulders, I said, Missy, give us some Fargo Schools, the things that you think would be beneficial. So, any questions or suggestions or ideas? All right. I was told we need a short sweep, so there you go.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Move on to number six point two, DGF High School Report.
Okay, so I gave you a handout here. So I'll give you a few highlights of things that have happened recently and things that are currently happening, and what might be coming up this spring yet. So number one, we just finished with semester one last week, finals, and today was day one of semester two. Industrial tech teacher, Brian Klein, began today with us, with the students, he was prepping last week, getting ready for today, and he's got a few goals, but one of his main goals is to, he's, he's been in the field for the last twenty years, working as a, essentially a contractor and builder and things like that, so his, one thing he really wants to work on with these high school kids is work ethic. And so he's seen a lot of these kids come out of high school and lacking that, and that's his number one thing that he wants to work on with these kids. Number two, student council came to me about two weeks ago, and they're requesting to do a winter semi-formal dance. Been giving them the okay to do that, they are looking at the Dilworth Community Center. It looks like it's, it, it may not work, because a lot of those nights are booked with some other activities, they're trying to do it by the end of February, and we don't want to push it too late to, so it's closer to prom, like that, so it might, it may likely look like it's coming back to the high school.
Have you checked with the Glendale?
Um, haven't done that.
I mean, I know it's smaller.
Yeah. I'll see what they want to do. Number three, so we're starting the second semester, but graduation's still always on our mind, and so we're, we're looking at some ways to maybe tweak some things with the graduation ceremony, but just as you can see on there though, today diplomas were ordered with student names on them, so ninety-eight names were sent today for printing, so hopefully all ninety-eight are there, maybe more that come in. Before teacher evaluations, we do that, we have a process for that, all of us do in each building, tenured teachers every three years, and non-tenured, if they're non-tenured, three of them for that year, so we're on course for that. I've got all the tenured's done that are up this year in the high school, and non-tenured's had one more round left, and I know the pairs are being completed in the next week or two in the high school. Number five, course guide, we'll have to, hopefully, at this level, have a direction on where we're going with course guide in the next, for the, for next year anyway, because we typically do registrations late February, early March, and so that gives us a little time to prepare for that, and then we do student registrations at that time to plan for the master schedule next year. And a favorite day of mine, and I think the students, and I would say probably the staff as well, is Career Day, and I can't say enough about how well Katie Omen does with that, and leading that, that day for us and our kids, and she gave me a few notes there, and I copied and pasted them into my outline here for you, but thirty-three businesses attended, positive feedback in a survey, and then she's always looking at ways to tweak it for the better. It says next year possibility of shortening to just a morning, that way we might be able to get more businesses there, or representation, rather than being there the whole day. It's, for me, it looks like a, it's, it's just really positive, good energy in there for the kids, and even the business people that show up. Anything for me?
Questions? Thank you, Wayne. Awesome. We'll move on to six point three, Board Committee Reports.
Well, we haven't had, because we don't have the committees yet.
Right.
That's an easy one, that's the shortest one for the night.
All right, so let's move on to-
Was that, that intergovernmental retreat along with the others, and mostly what was talking about workforce and stuff?
Yes.
You guys were at the morning, I only caught one of morning and two afternoon.
It was, I thought it was fantastic, the morning, and I wish, I wish I could have been there for the afternoon, but we were double booked and triple booked on Friday, of course, but, yeah, it was really, Heidi and I were talking about quite a bit over lunch afterwards, because so much of the morning was about demographics, and in particular, just talking about the different generations, and interacting with these different, whether it be the baby boomers and, and what else not, and, and I thought that was, and I've heard it a couple of different times, but it really makes a connection when you're starting to see the fact that you've got millennials and some of these different people from those demographics now supervising people older, and how critical it is to be respectful and understand why, when they, like, baby boomers, I mean, my daughter, it drives her crazy, the fact that I'm always doing a full sentence, and I got to have punctuation when I'm texting and all that, okay? And they look like, God, they're stupid, because they don't look at it, that's not normal for them. And a baby boomer, if you get it from somebody, and they just, it looks like, God, they're lazy. It's not, it's just part of how they do the communication, and the more that we understand that, as different generations, to be able to have better in the workforce. So I thought they had, they did extremely good job on that, and then they had a full session on ageism, which was really fantastic, because we know it's, it's the most grueling of any, and again, I, and I've said this, and staff have heard me say it, for two, three years, we're at that point in Minnesota that the population over sixty-five is greater than the population from zero to eighteen. And has that changed things in how we do, and competing for dollars at the state level, and what else not? And I've said that, that we better be really good as how we're looking to ask for money at the state level, because we're competing against our groups that also vote.
And largely.
Zero to eighteen don't vote, sixty-five and older does, so.
Don't forget about the seniors or the more elderly in the workforce, there's a lot to offer there, you know, don't be afraid to hire them. The afternoon, a couple panels on different things too, and just about every single one of them, the buzzword between them and the legislatures was the Career Academy is a game changer, repeated over and over and over again from them, so. So all of the public, or the Shields, the Sanford's, and everybody, the tech, or the home builders, you know, DigiKey, all said the same thing, you know, that's going to be very important to them.
Awesome. Any other comments, questions?
No.
I was gonna say, did we need to say anything as far as negotiations or, like, on the standstill?
Well, and they're, they're at a holding pattern right now, and I just was, I just was having some discussion before we started, and I'll be having some more discussion tomorrow to see if we're truly at a standstill, or if we've got some other side routes that we might be able to go with it. So I'll be, I'll work on that tomorrow, and then update the committee, going to find out of that.
And we also met with St. Elizabeth's, we looked at the land, and right now, we're going to be meeting with them again in another month, so three weeks, basically, from now. They're looking at whether they're going to sell the land, or whether they're going to, they sell the land, or they, just their options, and it was nice to just kind of hear what they are thinking about. hear what they are thinking about and what we are thinking about. We went down to snow removal. I was impressed to find out that the city cleans the snow for the Catholic Church and the Lutheran Church in DeWorth. And it doesn't happen in Morehead, let me tell you. So it was just good communication. So we'll be back meeting with them in about three weeks.
All right. We'll move on to 6.4 Superintendent Reports.
I'll really keep this short also because we know that we have meetings after we get done with this one. But just a couple of things, because so much of what I'm doing right now is everything that's going on, whether it be the project or the math curriculum, and I'm, you know, I'm a thorn for them because I'm like looking at the presentation, yep, but let's get this too, because they'll have questions on this. And like I said, I, they did an outstanding job with it. Next steps. And the reason why the money, as far as, we've got to make some decisions on how much can we afford to put upfront on this. And I bring this up publicly because, you know, as we're even going through negotiations and people are looking at how much money is there, and is there more money and such? You know, here's an example. How much money out of the budget are we going to commit on the front end? And so when people are all vying for, oh, there's more money. There must be more money here. Well, how much money there is for personnel and everything else are based on our long-term commitments on the other things. Okay? So it's not just there's X amount automatically for personnel, X amount for this. I can guarantee you that the amount of money that we have coming from the state for capital is already spent. We take other money to help with that. So when we're going to do this, if we're going to do six years or eight years, that's upfront money that we're saying we're putting on the front end. And we're taking, so it's, it is, there is no magic bullet point where this is how much money we got for this stuff. When I'm going through the, trying to figure out how many pupil units we have, and I, and I say, God, we're dropping on this part. And I'll spend the nights trying to recalculate, okay, how much can we do for capital? How much can we do for this part, and this part, and this part? If we stay with this one to do this one. And then I'll give you recommendations when we have the work session and such. Because then we'll know how much we could actually look at. Do we do three years to start on this? Knowing that you got that upfront money. Do we do six? We just don't know yet. We got to, we got to look through the money, see what we got there. So next steps, sometime in February, early March, you know, we've got to make some decisions by March on that. The next board meeting, we really do need to do the, the high school, as far as that, the course handbook. Why that one is so critical is because the course handbook, we know that the courses will be changing, you know, as we keep doing this year after year. But what they're going to need and what Katie needs is part of that course handbook has the graduation requirements for the next four years. So when they're sitting down with the kids and saying, you need this, and this, and this, they can't do that until that gets approved by the board. So please take a look, knowing that February 10th, we really do need to approve that. The most important piece in that is the graduation requirement. So if you have questions about that, contact me and contact Katie, contact me. Because that's the most critical time sensitive piece in my mind of that course handbook. So that's got to be done then. The other thing is, and it's on the action item for tonight, as far as what we do with the calendar, my recommendation would be the next time you, we have any potential dates is really that Easter break. And I would, I would recommend, I think we're at that point. And in April, we will definitely be at that point, that we'll need some more professional development time to talk about the steps and departments meeting with Lee and them and such. So my recommendation would be when you get to that action item tonight, not necessarily have the kids come back. Let's just have that be a staff only day, not have the kids make it up. So that people, if they're planning things for Easter and all that.
On Monday?
It's on that Monday, the 13th. Leave the Good Friday one alone, but, but work with that Monday, the 13th, then at least. They can do planning and their site leadership teams and all that as far as potential dates that they've got to be able to do some discussions. So that's all I have, my report.
All right. Any questions? All right. We'll move on to number seven, 7.1, approval of minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. By Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Move on to number eight, the consent agenda. And I think...
Board bills?
Board bills, yeah.
This month, $359,504.19.
Nineteen cents. All right. And you've got in your packet, the treasurer's report, Minnesota liquid assets and tax account and activity accounts reports. Any questions on that? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Sandy made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Amy has a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign. Approved. Okay, we're going to section 9.1. This is to do with committee representation. I don't know if we, do we have a...
Lindsay wrote it down in her book.
Lindsay wrote it all down.
I don't think we have.
So that didn't, was that sent out to you? Because she put, Brooke put all of those recommendations into one, into the document?
I don't think we've seen that.
I didn't see that.
I didn't see that either.
It, it, well, let's put it this way. If you approve it based on the recommendations that you had from the cities.
Yeah.
That's, it's on that. And we've got the, I thought it was sent out with this stuff. Because Lindsay gave it to her early in the week.
Right.
Last week.
That's all right. But we can, we can move to approve based on what we agreed to in Lindsay's...
We sent it to Minneapolis.
Yeah.
I'll move.
Because you all set which ones you wanted to, and...
Pretty much the same. There were a few minor changes.
Right.
If we, if we can just get committees sent out to administrators, so then they know which ones were on, and we can get meeting dates and times.
When I get home tonight, I'll share that document. Because I thought, I believe it's in a folder that you all have already access to. And that's probably, when, when we do this with these Google documents, what happens a lot of times is when she places them into the folders, you don't get another email on it. And I think that's what's happening with this one because it's in your folder and you do have access. But I'll just redo your names again, so it sends an email to you with it.
There's a motion.
We've got a motion by Ronnie. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sandy. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Passes. On to number 9.2. Changes to the 2019-22 school calendar.
So you either can say, no, we're not going to make up the date at all. We're going to make it up for staff and students, or we're going to make it up just for staff. And my recommendation is let's just make it up with staff because we're going to need more of those professional development days as we're trying to make all the decisions with this project that need to be done.
That's April 13th.
April 13th. Yep, Monday, April 13th.
And we're still good with enough student contact?
We're not even close. Yeah, we're not even close. Because remember, we're making up the other ones.
I think there's going to be a lot more staff development with this building.
Even with the math stuff. I mean, you think about what they want to be able to have for, it gives them some of that time to be able to have those discussions. So it'll be well used.
Yep. Make a motion to, to approve Monday, April 13th, for a professional development, non-student contact date.
Sandy's made motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Raleigh's second.
Is there other changes on that one from before? Or that's the only?
That's the only one. Because you already did the other two days.
You already did two days.
Who seconded it?
Raleigh.
Okay. Got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. All right.
And you got the three different versions of the 2020 bond today, so.
Move on to number 10.1, resolution approving the sale of general obligation bond series 2020A. And I think we just have to read this.
Yeah, it's not that long.
You need somebody to make the, to introduce the resolution?
I'll move.
Because that'll be in the minutes then. Okay.
Ronnie.
Ronnie's moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Raleigh's seconded it.
All right. Resolution of School Board of Independent School District number 2164, DeWorth, Glendon, Felton, State of Minnesota, approving the sale of the district's general obligation school building bond series 2020A to the purchaser thereof, determining the form and details of such bonds, authorizing the execution, delivery, and registration of such bonds, providing for the payment of and security of such bonds, and authorizing and ratifying certain other documents and actions connected where they're within.
Any...
Sorry about making it the third version, but I don't know if it made any difference change in the location for the meeting, but I didn't want to tech the county screwing up this thing.
Exactly. No, no, it's, it's good because they need it for the final documents, closing documents.
It's good to catch that.
Good catch. I think we need to do a roll call.
Yep.
So we'll start with Raleigh.
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Yes.
Amy? David? Yes. Laura?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Aye.
Resolution passes. On to 10.2, proclamation of paraprofessionals. And I think the governor passed a proclamation making this paraprofessional recognition.
And they got it too so early, didn't they, Mary Ann?
Last Wednesday at 4:50.
We very much appreciate our paraprofessionals. Should we read that?
Okay. State of Minnesota proclamation. Minnesota is home to more than 20,000 paraprofessionals who provide services in multiple settings within schools, including support for instruction, student activities, and for individual students, as well as numerous other tasks that contribute to educational successes. The support and services provided by paraprofessionals are integral to student achievement, resulting in even better, more effective Minnesota schools. And the State of Minnesota and Minnesota Department of Education are committed to excellence in education and recognize the important role that paraprofessionals play in ensuring educational successes. Whereas Minnesota Department of Education will celebrate the contributions of paraprofessionals during Paraprofessional Recognition Week, which runs from January 27th through January 31st, 2020. Now therefore, I, Tim Walz, Governor of Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the week of January 27th through the 31st as Paraprofessional Recognition Week.
Thank you, Amy. So do we have a motion to approve this week of January 27th to the 31st week we're in right now as DGF Paraprofessional Recognition Week?
So moved.
Got a motion by Raleigh.
Or by Laura.
It was kind of tight.
Good second. Raleigh's seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We go on to number 11.
Does that work for those of you who are in operations for five o'clock on this one?
Yes.
And, and I ask because we really can't do it afterwards, and there'll be an action item. We've got to figure out what we do with the truck pickup. Okay? So we really do need to talk about that.
I'm good.
It's five o'clock then. And I'll make sure that we have whatever other information you'd like to get. Did, did you all get the, because there should have been an email that afforded. If you didn't, as far as showing what's wrong with it and how much...
No.
Okay?
We haven't gotten it.
No, I don't think so.
All right. So I'll send that out tonight if that didn't go through. Because we've got, we've got a potential bill if you want to fix it.
So the next, the board meeting will be Monday, February 10th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. The DGF High School Media Center here in Glendon. And immediately following that, it's going to be a board work session at, at the same location. And policy committee meeting to the department.